It is now 3:00 P.M., June 6, 2017. And I call to order the adjourned meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville, and the City Council seating as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the City's Housing Assets Successor. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Gomez.
Good afternoon.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Here.
Councilmember DeGretti.
Here.
Mayor for Tim Cox.
Here.
Mayor Garcia.
Here. At this time, we will have the A Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Chief John Schuer. So please stand.
Please raise your flag. Right hand over your heart. Ready to begin. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Our first item on the agenda is discussion and possible action regarding options for funding fire services, and I will turn this over to our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia, thank you, members of council, for your patience on this report. It's taken a little bit longer than we had hoped, but I believe attached and presented tonight, they'll find a very thorough report. Just by way of history, in January, we first talked about the potential for annexation. Ultimately, January 17th, council voted not to pursue annexation at that time. On February 15th, the city council voted to terminate the fire contract, as in not renew it, effective July of 2018, the contract with County Fire, and gave us direction to study options and prepare an RFP. Ultimately, an hour creep was not prepared for a variety of reasons, partially because it took us longer than expected to get all the data that we needed to prepare the RFP. And there was already an interest in our findings to date, so rather than submitting an RFP, we did a cost estimate for CalFire. We already have a good contract cost from County Fire, and we did a cost estimate for CalFire based on the UCAIPA contract that they have, it's a public contract, so that's what is included in the report. At earliest, we probably could have submitted an RFP that would have compared apples to apples, would have been in early May, but we still would not be having this meeting if we had done that, so apologies that we miscalculated the timing for that. But ultimately, the report that is in written form, and is going to be presented by our consultant from City Gate, is remarkably thorough. In fact, I want to commend staff, not only Janelle Davidson, who headed this up for me, but also especially our staff in our G I S division of I T. One of the things that we were pursuing was the potential for annexation to Apple Valley Fire Protection District. Although they never indicated a bearing as yes or no, they were able to share their calculations for how their parcel tax, their special benefit assessment, is calculated. We then used that to apply it to all the parcels in Victorville, to get an idea for A, what would it look like if we were to annex to Apple Valley Fire, which is not something that's on the table today, but also B, if the council ultimately were interested in pursuing a similar tax in Victorville for Victorville, what might that look like? So, I don't want to belabor it, but we, the G I S division took the 35 or so thousand parcels and applied this tax, and roughly half of them did not have building information as far as the square footage, which was important for calculating this, especially for commercial buildings. So our G I S staff, using satellite photography, actually calculated the size of the building based on the rooftop times the number of floors, very rough calculation, but they did all that manually and did a great job in coming up with a final rough cost of, if I recall correctly, about $5.3 million in new revenue that would be generated if we either annexed into Apple Valley Fire, or if we adopted a similar type of arrangement. So with that, I'll turn it over to Steve from City Gate, who put together this report along with Janelle Davidson, I don't think is planning on speaking, but she did a lot of the legwork here in City Hall for us, so you have the light single.
Good afternoon, mayor, members of the council. A pleasure to be here today on this very important issue for you. Be prepared to read PowerPoint. And I know you can't see it unless you choose to turn around, but I'll try to, if you follow along on paper, I'll keep you on the same page number. I start off all my briefings on fire service projects with my elected officials by reminding them of an often overlooked fact, believe it or not, in the United States, there are no minimum service levels for fire and EMS services. It's an issue of local control. Communities fund the level of fire protection they can afford and try to match up that level of protection to risks present in the community. However, if you fund a fire department at all, you must do so with the safety of the firefighter and the residents in mind. You can't put an under-equipped, under-trained, broken-down fire truck fire department on the street and not incur liability. The difficulty in the last 30 years is the expense of not just firefighters, but the equipment and the safety standards has risen dramatically faster than the cost of inflation. You're not the only client I have in and post-recession who is grappling with their costs of fire services. When you think about, well gee, what level of fire services should we have, two parts simple formula to keep in mind. The speed of the attack is that single neighborhood-based crew who goes out to modest everyday emergencies and handles the emergency, small fire, auto fire, single patient heart attack, two-car auto accident, minor to moderate injuries. The weight of the attack, looking at the press here in the last almost two weeks, is serious fires, like you've been having, and that's massing multiple crews quickly enough from across the city to keep the fire from destroying the building of origin or spreading to adjoining buildings. So the two things you're always concerned about in designing fire services is how many neighborhood-based quicker units do I need, but I can't spread them so far apart, I can't collectively gather them in a timely manner to fight serious emergencies. Our overall opinion in the choices before you, the necessary costs have been identified to make policy fork-in-the-road decisions. I'm going to have to probably say three times this afternoon. These are close cost estimates, but please remember, there are still estimates. Until you make incremental decisions and get binding costs from different issues, you never exactly know what your final costs will be, but you have enough information before you to make a policy fork-in-the-road decision. Long-term, we believe you have two effective but very different options, city-provided fire services and annexation to the county district. I'll talk about CalFire and some of the other choices too, as we go, but based on informational and the knowns today, those two seem to fit your back pattern events. Staying as it is, contracting for service would continue to pass cost control for other agencies, so part of this multifaceted headache you have isn't just cost, but who controls cost is a critical question. The biggest part of our work was to create on paper a standalone new Victorville Fire Department, and Fire Department operations that I've said have safety oversight regulations. And here's the minimum headquarters team for an independent restored fire department. Fire chief, a division chief, second-in-command over the three operational battalion chiefs that are on duty 24/7/365, training, EMS clinical oversight for the paramedics, fire marshal and fire inspectors, and office support professionals. Those are all detailed in the report and expensed. Well, how did we do the expense? You don't have a fire department salary schedule today. We took as a close comparable neighboring Apple Valley Fire District at their mid-salary band, step six, and expensed every position, line position by hypothetical person in a detailed budget. We then discussed with CalPERS, could you use the older 2% at 50 safety plan as recruitment enhancement tool, or would you have to use the new Jerry Brown Pepper Formula? And the difference there is how fast you get to 2%. 2% at 50 hits at 50 if you have enough years. Pepper hits at age 57. Starting a new fire department, in my opinion, you're going to need to hire seasoned laterals, not entry-level firefighters, under only the Jerry Brown formula. Slightly more costly to use 2% at 50, we expensed it as a recruitment retention tool to fresh start a fire department. We also modeled the new Pepper Formula. The report talks about the cost swing between those two variables. We used existing Victorville salaries for non-safety employees, such as fire inspectors and office support personnel. We used existing Victorville benefit and employer costs for things like health insurance, workers' compensation. We included uniform holiday pay, workers' compensation, and it didn't fit on the slide over time, because every department has to be staffed every day of the year. In terms of startup expenses, you would pick up some new one-time expenses, and also these would be incurred into your ongoing fire department budget. The ongoing expenses year one going forward amount to just around a quarter of a million dollars for City Hall premiums and cost issues, as well as added City Hall staff. Remember today, you're not supporting over 60 personnel for payroll, legal, workers' comp, health insurance, all the headaches and pleasures of direct employment are your contractor's responsibility. If we look at startup and capital costs, the top slide is a repeating from the report that you would need to do handle recruitment, human resources, legal startup costs, you would need to bring staff and phases on ahead of time to rebuild an operating department, and then eventually have a turnover, cut over date. You would need to equip them with safety equipment. At a minimum, at a minimum, those startup costs are 1.3 million, one-time dollars. Under your county contract, you've been repairing and paying repairs and small tools and equipment, and there's a certain amount of divorce negotiations that would occur over the fleet. This estimate does not include the pickup trucks and sedans, the smaller units, whether the county would want to sell them at fair market value, or you buy all new. If you had to buy all new small vehicles, this number could rise by 300,000 to 400,000 dollars. You also, today, and we looked at the age mileage of your engines, county has been recommending, and I agree, that you need to, as soon as possible, replace the structure fire engine, a brush fire engine, an aerial ladder truck, and a paramedic squad. So regardless of your service provider choice, we believe you're staring at the near-term obligation of 2.2 million dollars in fire apparatus equipment. Now let's talk about annexation briefly, and a lot of our clients consider this, and some go through with it. Annexation is very unique, and let me skip over the slide for a minute and just say it as simply as I can.
What page are you on?
I'm on Slide 8.
That would be Slide, page 8 on my...
Are you, I'm sorry, are you in the report or the PowerPoint?
Well, you said we can follow along.
In the PowerPoint.
Right.
The PowerPoint is right in front of your computer. Thank you. This is the general capstone slide on annexation. Annexation is unique under California rev. tax laws, because you're transferring fire service obligation to a fire district frozen at today's cost structure, and you transfer all of your liabilities. The fire district has to have sustainable revenues to pay for that transfer, but you're freezing them at today's cost. It's between the voters and the fire district forever going forward. If the fire district can't live within the revenues you've transferred or voted in. So it's a unique opportunity to fix your costs at today's market value, and let someone else do the cost control years and years down the road. And if you look at the larger fire districts in California, they will eventually, maybe once every 10 or 15 years, do a supplemental tax true-up, because eventually inflation gets to them, but they're pretty infrequent when that happens. They live within their rev. tax needs, like all units of government do. Where a city council is exposed every year for a new bargaining agreement, new cost of a fire truck, fixing a roof on a fire station, your costs go up, year after year after year, and the general fund's constantly exposed to that. These are very different models. You have different control locally, but you also have different cost exposure if you maintain local control. So if you annex, you have no long-term obligations. The fire district can never come back into council chambers with their handout and say, please pay us more. They must keep up with the growth in the community. As a result, as I said for the third time, the county fire district and its taxpayers are forever responsible, not the city's general fund revenues. CalFire contract.
I have a question before you continue.
Yes, sir.
If the current contract is 13.5 million, is that close?
It's pretty close, Jim.
So we would then transfer 13.5 million from some source of our funding, and never any more. The county then would go through the annexation supposedly, and pick up another 5 million from the assessment. Forever, then they would always get their money for the assessment and any increase in the assessments annually.
Correct.
Do you think...
With one correction, Mr. Cox.
Yeah.
That is that the assessment would offset that 13.5 million that we would otherwise have to pay from property taxes.
Well, that's what I had earlier understood, but I don't see it.
Oh, shoot. We have a table and a few slides, let me walk you through.
All right.
The side-by-side cost factors.
Question about them never having their handout again. Does that apply to pension obligations?
Yes.
They'll never come back and ask you.
You exit the business.
Mm-hmm.
That's correct. That was correct, and applies to pension obligations under the current contract. You are walking away from the provision of fire services forever.
Yeah.
Now, the two-edged sword...
It's just built into the contract.
Be very transparent. This is a two-edged sword. You have no cost-revenue obligations going forward. If you are unhappy with the level of service, other than expressing unhappiness, you have no recourse.
Right.
I mean, that's just the quid pro to this deal.
Right. One thing, Councilman Kennedy, though, is that we still have our own retirement liability through PERS from our former firefighters.
That you're paying down.
From when they were city employees, that we continue to, I would say, pay down, but as we pay it down, the cost...
17 million to 9 million now?
Uh, it's closer to 17, yes. Somehow, when we make payments, the total goes up.
But if you restart, so let's skip ahead. If you restart a fire department, in whatever CalPERS plan you pick, you will once again start accruing unfunded liability, because CalPERS is not yet charging, and never will, the full cost annually of the pension, based on this returns. So let's talk now about, there is another contract option, and the manager earlier talked about request for proposal. Normally, a city services, landscape, lighting, maintenance, trash, you put out an RFP with specifications and a bunch of bidders with this. In this arena, you really don't have bidders. You request the state for a proposal for contract fire services. That's very lengthy and involved. The process to request and get multi-level state approvals will easily take 12 to 18 months. And because of something else that happened in this county back in the recession, a new state law was passed. LAFCO voted in annexations and contracting as the final set, not the local city council. So if CalFire administratively gave you a cost at all, if you liked the cost, you would then submit it to LAFCO for consent and review. At this point, CalFire never provides informal quotes, because there's too much detailed costing that goes into their local government cost model, and there's layers of review, both at local, regional, and Sacramento that go into that, and certainly, I'm sure CalFire is here this afternoon and can speak with more specificity. For your information, we provided the decision-making flow chart in the CalFire policies as an appendix to your report. We'll talk about those costs in a minute. Our findings for city-based services, if you reestablish the city department, you need to adopt a service-level goal to drive response time. Do you want a one-station department? Do you want a five-and-a-half-station fire department? At what level of customer service are you going to expense to protect the neighborhoods and the commercial industrial communities? A department of the existing four stations, five-and-a-half companies, would require at least 58 sworn personnel and a minimum headquarters team of 12. Your year-one operating cost, if you hit this number, and I say if, because remember, we modeled a hypothetical Apple Valley midpoint hiring rate. You have to set your own salary schedule, and you have to hire people either at entry wages, or perhaps top step, if you want journey-level captains, chief officers, and chiefs of department. So we've done a midpoint cost estimation. In the near term, it looks like your general fund can support that number, but you would still need supplemental funding for replacement fire apparatus, station repair, and opening an additional station that you've not opened, and adding a second paramedic squad that your workload clearly indicates the need for. But could you provide a assessments-level internal department, not growing it at less money than the county contract? Let's compare the costs in a minute, because it depends on how you factor your one-time and your apparatus costs. We estimate the startup conversion to be at least 1.3 million, it could be higher with small tools and equipment, final decisions. The city is also facing, as we mentioned, the 2.2 million dollars in fire apparatus costs. Our review of the county fire district's personnel overhead and supply expenses in their annexation proposal, which has been fully detailed and submitted to you before, is typical of the cost a regional fire agency charges a contract city, including their overhead ratios and percents. We find the annexation proposal includes the elements necessary. It does increase services, I'll explain where in the cost table in a couple of slides, and it also funds long-term capital fire apparatus and station needs. You're turning over not just your pension, bill-forward obligations, you're turning over your fire truck and fire station obligations to the county fire district, where they're paid. The proposal's been created consistent with best practices and would like to gain LAFCO's approval. I understand there's the FP5 revenue slice in there, and I'm not talking about voter and this council's approval, I'm saying, as constructed, it meets the LAFCO test. Absent a formal annexation proposal from Apple Valley, we really couldn't evaluate the elements. Apple Valley didn't say if they'd want to expand their fire district or not. We've given you an illustration of applying their benefit assessment technique to your parcels, so you can compare that to the county flatrate FP5 system. Number nine, City Gate finds that a fire services annexation to include a special fire tax does solve your long-term fire service needs, while also freeing up funds for other critical city needs. Number 10, an approximation of CalFire contract cost places the scenario very close to the cost of city-provided services at your current staffing levels, not enhanced. Given the lengthy CalFire contract process and LAFCO's decision point, and the fact that at any part in that decision tree, the state agency could say, no, thank you, it doesn't meet the beneficial reciprocity needs of the state of California protecting its lands, you could go well down that path and be right back where you are today with a contract that you've now given notice on, but you hit the wall. That would have to extend. You can't get a contract quickly out of CalFire, the system does not provide for that.
Question? I had been under the impression for some five months, that if a letter from the city went to CalFire requesting that they consider providing contract services, that they could then move forward with putting together all the figures. And as of now, I don't believe we have formally set that document to CalFire, and so I'm hoping CalFire will talk about that. It's earlier, it sounded like you said it's a lengthy process asking them. It's not, it's a letter. It's a lengthy process for them to go through.
Correct.
We are now five-and-a-half months behind the queue. If we wait another five-and-a-half months, it'll really be out there, won't it?
No.
So why aren't we moving on that?
One of our recommendations tonight, if that's a policy fork-in-the-road this council chooses, you would do so as soon as possible.
I think it should have been done five months ago.
So two answers to that, Jim. One is that we got that direction February 15th, not five-and-a-half months ago.
All right, February 15th. This is June 15th.
Right. And two, the information that we would have needed for an apples-to-apples comparison, that their chief would need, did not come to the city until May 1st. The final piece of information we needed to put together, that RFP, came to us on May 1st. So the earliest that letter could have gone out and been meaningful enough for them to bid, would have been the first week of May.
Well, I understand what you're saying. It just seems odd that it's not important, if we turn over to the county, we make no decisions whatsoever. They make all the decisions, and no matter what they do, it's okay, but for anybody else, we have to determine the fire levels, and the cost, and the stations, and everything else. That didn't even seem logical. We either have a responsibility, or we don't, and I don't think we have any councilman here that can tell you how many, what kind of vehicle to buy, what the response time should be, how many stations should be operating. That comes from the professional people who do it. And so if we want to know the service, we ask them to put together proposals. We can't put that together for them. It's like us writing the specs for a GMC pickup before we bid it. We allow other people to do that, we don't have to do it. We don't have to figure out how we're going to put together the compounds for an overlay before we do a street. Other people do that. Professional firefighters put together the service if they're asked to, and they can provide that fairly easily if we just ask them to do it. That includes the county, that includes CalFire, that includes Apple Valley, or any other entity that could provide that fire service. We need to move ahead really quickly.
You know, it seems to me, because I've read this thoroughly, I think, so I need to understand the options, it seems to me that our real choice is, that has to come before any of these options, is number one, are the citizens of this community going to agree to provide an extra 3 to 5 million dollars in tax revenues to support any of these options, or not? Because if they're not, we don't have any options. We have one choice, and that's to annex. And is that simpler in my mind? I don't see it any more complicated than that. If that ballot issue doesn't get on the November ballot, and we don't get an answer from the citizens, one way or the other, in November, we can't, we've got all these options to consider, but we can't pay for any of them. So what's the point if the citizens aren't giving us the money? They're going to give the money, one way or the other, either through annexation, or through a sales tax, or whatever other tax. That seems to me to be critical for a decision, it's got to get handled.
If I could continue with my factual findings, and then when we have the cost comparison slide, I'd like to put some of those choices in side-by-side comparison. You effectively just restated finding 13, is the city has to choose how to fund, at what level of funding its fire services commitment. We found, City Gate found, that you don't have a sustainable fire service funding source if we believe the fiscal documents you previously have been given. We didn't audit the city books. You haven't opened a fire station that's been built. You need to buy fire equipment that's not been bought. You need another paramedic squad for the ever-increasing volume of EMS calls. If you had sufficient fiscal strength, you would have already handled all of those obligations. And you haven't to date, because like all of our clients in California, there is not a great recovery after the Great Recession. Everyone is economically challenged, they're very... Everyone is economically challenged to varying degrees. An annexation, finding 15 to the district with a supplemental tax, or any choice with a supplemental tax, will get you to sustainable fire services. If we look at the cost comparison option table, I want to walk you through how it's built. We were charged with giving you detailed cost model information on the choices before you, so that even if you had started six months ago and still didn't have a CAL FIRE estimate, how do you compare the cost of local city departments to the county contract, to the county annexation, and the back-of-the-envelope CAL FIRE costs? So you have four columns. The left column is county contract. And the county contract, as you know, has a base cost there of 13 and change million. If you were to buy all the necessary fire apparatus out of one-time funds, you're at $15.2 million. Next over is the city, apples-to-apples to the county contract. Only four engines, one ladder, and squad, not reopening the stations. Estimated at operating of $9.7 million plus startup city hall expenses plus apparatus, you're at $13.3, year one. Subtract the startup out of that, you're back closer to an all-probability about $10 million ongoing a year, to which you'd still have to fund the apparatus. If in the city model, we took the city staffing estimates and opened Station 315 and added a second squad, you're at $12 million, year one. If in year one, you then have the startup expenses, which are increased to hire even more firefighters, your year-one city, the total amount of the check you would write ongoing at one time is $15.8 billion. If you go over to the CAL FIRE estimate, we've taken another comparable contract, added city-based headquarters expenses, because we don't have CAL FIRE headquarters expenses, added in Station 315 and the squad, and we're north of $14 million. That figure does not include CAL FIRE's recent four-year year-end, that you can ask them about, or we can discuss later. Those are existing known CAL FIRE contract costs. Under county fire annexation, the annexation proposal improved fire services. It included increasing the station. It put two squads in at $15.4 million. If you include the LAPCO fees in that, you're at $15.5. What I'd like you to focus on, your year-one expenses across the bottom are within model error of each other. We can't tell you precisely what you're going to spend on 60 new employees yet. We can't tell you precisely to the penny what CalPERS is going to charge you. But in year one, you're facing an obligation of, in the neighborhood, of just over $15 million. And now here's the difference between the models. To spend $15 million, you arguably need a revenue enhancement. Do you do your own revenue enhancement, do your own department? Do you do the county FP5 annexation revenue enhancement and walk away? If you walk away, you've effectively transferred an increased fire department for $15 million in blended revenues to the county. Three years from now, if you establish your own department, five years from now, if you contract with CAL FIRE, any cost increases come back here to be borne by the Victorville general fund. You're in charge of everything, both expenses and revenue. Let's keep going. The flowchart we put in the PowerPoint basically was the discussion a few slides ago about, is the first question, can the general fund without a revenue enhancement sustain long-term fire services? If yes, you can do city. You could provide, continue some form of contract services. If no, there are at least four special tax benefit assessment techniques out there in the California rep tax law. Will they pass or not, which yields back to a sustainable model? If you annex to the county with the FP5 tax, you'd know before the end of the year that you have sustainable fire services, the replacement fire trucks would be purchased, you'd open another station when the county could afford to do so during the conversion year, and you'd have a second paramedic squad. All of that was expensed in the LAPCO application that we reviewed. So our summary of those findings are that pathway, you could provide your own, likely going to need a revenue enhancement somehow. Grow the entire general fund, vote a public safety overlay for sheriffs and fire costs. You could also choose to spend the time to weigh down a CAL FIRE proposal. But we've shown you a CAL FIRE proposal comes close to your cost. The latest way to increase over four years is significant. CAL FIRE would expense a new proposal and enhance labor costs. Four years from now, this or a future council are going to be staring at a more expensive fire department. There is no getting around what CalPERS, health insurance, and pay raises will do. Can the general fund, four years from now, afford those increases? And when we talk about local control of the chart, local control at the city level means you incur all the pain and all the joy of funding fire services. If you contract with CAL FIRE, in our opinion, there's not a major difference with contracting with the county of San Bernardino. You have given away cost control to another elected and appointed management team. It's either the county supervisors, the directors of the county fire district, or it's the state of California. But the only thing you negotiate in a contract is how many fire engines you bought. You can never negotiate down the cost of a fire engine. I had clients try that in the recession of LA County Fire. It doesn't work. You can't go in on a contract-by-contract basis and say, "Here's our general fund. We're eating our reserves to the bone. We can't afford the cost per engine." And a regional fire department says in a contract, "The cost per engine is the cost per engine. If you don't like the cost per engine, buy less engines." You can't negotiate the individual commodity value.
So it sounds like you're saying that the contract for CAL FIRE and the contract for county is going to cost the same.
They could end up very close to each other.
They could. Can we hear from CAL FIRE first before we make that determination?
Oh, absolutely.
Oh, good.
I'm quite ready with my presentation then.
So if you're saying CAL FIRE comes very close to also the county, so the county will also deal with the health, the pay raises, and the CalPERS?
Correct. As with CAL FIRE. But in a contract model, if they run out of revenue, it's the general fund writing the check to CAL FIRE. It's no different than your county contract model today, that because of cost increases, you voted to leave. As a kind of a neutral outsider, but very experienced in the fire business, though, by the way, and I've also been an elected official twice over, I understand your headache. And the headache, in our opinion, comes down to re-establishing your own department and trying to keep control on the cost the best you can, with some voter-enhanced revenues at some appropriate point to grow it. But if you continue to contract, you will always have other entities setting your costs.
Well, let's be clear about one thing. The cost of county fire is going to rise whether we annex or not. If we annex, the cost of county fire will continue to rise, just the same as if we don't annex. The only difference is who writes the check. Annexing means it doesn't come out of the city's general fund. But let's not try to separate the city, the city entity, from the citizens of the city. The citizens are going to pay for these increases, no matter what, wherever they are. The county contract under annexation is going to rise. They aren't going to build a general fund, but they're going to build the citizens.
Correct.
And they're going to do it with a property tax. So it's going to get paid for by the people in Victorville. My only issue is whether they ought to have a choice about that. If we annex, they have no choice. They have no word.
Good job.
So our second recommendation was if a city department were to be reestablished, your next discreet step is to obtain a final CalPERS cost-to-benefit formula commitment in writing. CalPERS is like dealing with the IRS. You can ask them verbally, you can get a memo, and then they're asking for a contract. And we've done the first two. You now would have to establish in a city department legally ask for a contract and at the benefit formula you choose. And then, back to the cost of startup and making the service level and hiring decisions, that's why our study said the very next decision you would make is to hire a permanent fire chief to build the organization and help the council make those informed choices. Number three, it's already been stated, if you're going to ask CAL FIRE and wait for a proposal, do so here immediately. Number four, regardless of the path chosen, I'm telling you as your outside fire services reviewer, the county isn't scaring you with the need to replace fire apparatus, nor are they prematurely requesting opening a fire station and adding a paramedic squad. You have a very high level of calls for service, and especially EMS calls, for a community your population's in. Lot of reasons into that, not all negative. Every community's got its own social demography that drives requests for help. In your case, you've also got the freeway, the logistics center, you've got tourism coming through there. All of that drives calls for service. So the summation slide in the PowerPoint is, again, to repeat, the four major policy choices, you could do nothing, you could negotiate another contract extension with the county, you could return to a city-provided department, you could do a delay of game and get a CAL FIRE proposal compared to annexation or a city department, or you could annex to the county fire district. And I hear the statement about voter choice, and I've had more than one client vote of the voters, even in an advisory sense, when they were doing the benefit protest assessment FP5 vehicle, they still asked the voters, "What do they think?" So you're not prohibited from doing that if that were your political choice. If we look at the second-to-last slide on timeline, you've given notice to the county under the contract, you could stand up a city-provided department, with a lot of hard work before county contract termination. You could pursue annexation, you could pursue the CAL FIRE contract. There's something else the study can't quantify, because it's within the county's ability or not to absorb personnel and their labor relations agreement. But by exiting the contract and either restarting your department or contracting with another provider, CAL FIRE, Apple Valley, and their contract, anybody else, if the county can't assure of all the firefighters currently serving the city, they're laid off. And there's no magic way to say to the county, "We're just going to rehire them a minute after midnight, under different pay and benefits." And there's a whole lot of complicated labor relations issues that get into that. So we didn't quantify what the layoffs would be, and I'm sure the county staff can talk to that today, but unspoken in the report is the collateral impact of ceasing employment for probably a significant number of county firefighters unless they have enough retirement attrition in the next two years to absorb the personnel. If you do a fresh-started city fire department, you've got to put job announcements out for recruitment, you have to give them medical exams, you need to make choices about who you want to employ and what rank structure. And with that, we're done with the PowerPoint presentation. Staff and I are here, along with any testimony you get to answer your questions. Thanks for your attention.
Thank you. Did the lights turn on? Is CAL FIRE here? My county's here, CAL FIRE. I'd like to hear from both. The council would like to.
Definitely. Are they here? Are they willing to come up and speak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name's Mark Carver, I'm the fire chief and fire warden for the county fire district. I wanted to talk to us a little bit about, and I'm not going to tell you anything you haven't heard, Mr. Gary, the presentation was very comprehensive. I wanted, probably this goes along the line, just emphasizing a few things that we've spoken about and really, really delivered over the last many years in our partnership with the city of Victorville. And they revolve around really value and accountability. We never set out to be the cheapest option. We set out to be the best option. But we do that in a way that we provide the best value that we possibly can to the people in Victorville and those surrounding this community. We really do that through breadth and depth. The breadth of services that we provide is that all-risk service model that we deliver every day, and that's wildland hazmat rescue services. Those are all EMS services, paramedic services, that some of the same reasons that you chose the county in the first place at the beginning of the contract. Those are expensive services. And if a city or the county fire district itself were to invest in those and not be able to spread those over a large group of agencies and a part of the county, it's borne really by one area. And so what we do is we take all those services and we spread those out. Really, that's the regional model. That's taking the cost to provide those services and spreading those amongst as many different jurisdictions and county areas as we possibly can. The depth of service is really our ability, the county's ability, to empty out everything we have on any given incident, whether it's in Victorville, or it's in Adelanto, or it's in Hesperia. That standing cost, the cost for that standing army of firefighters, is expensive. And people ask me occasionally, "How many firefighters should we have?" Well, the answer, very simply, is however many you can afford. We would love to have one on every street corner. We think that you'd be better off if you did, but we know that we can't all afford that. So we can't offer that. But what we can offer is we can offer that standing army on any given incident at any given time here and have in the city of Victorville. Accountability, I know Mr. Gary talked about loss of control. I would argue that we have, over the relationship that we've had with the city of Victorville, been very accountable. We are a member of your city staff in many cases, have an office here in city hall. When you want an answer from your fire department, we give it to you. If you want to talk about cost containment, we've done that. The call volume here in Victorville has gone up 60% over the course of the contract that we've had with you, and our costs have gone up 5.2%. That was because you came to us and you said, "We need help. We can't afford what you want to give us." It gets back to that firefighter on every street corner. And we said, "Let's figure out how we can get together with our neighbors, both in the county and with our city neighbors, and figure out how we can distribute costs even better." That includes supplies and services. That includes MOU. That includes all the costs of services. And so I believe that we've been accountable to you, and that really is our model. It's in our mission statement. It's that all-risk fire protection with accountability to the local community, something we take very seriously. Just on the calls for service, in 2016, the 2,565 times throughout the year, really seven times a day, the county fire resource was closest to a call in Victorville. When somebody dialed 911 for help, a county fire resource not in the city was closest to that caller, and we responded to that as part of the county fire district. Just a little bit that I read, it's very interesting to me, something that we hadn't done so much research on, was this difference between a benefit assessment and a parcel tax. Interestingly enough, it doesn't appear to generate any significant difference in revenue, but the appear to generate any significant difference in revenue, but the philosophy of how you apply that tax is different. In a parcel tax, a straight parcel tax, you're delivering that tax to the parcel owner. You're not delivering it to the business owner. In a benefit assessment, theoretically, you're going to assess or tax a business or a multi-dwelling unit more than you would a resident. And so, it really does come down to the philosophy. Do you tax the homeowner, the parcel owner, or do you tax the business? And in fact, many business owners that do business here, especially the small mom-and-pop type businesses, actually do own property as a business, and they own property as a resident or a parcel owner as well. So, they're actually hit twice anyway. One last thing, because I think we've talked about retirement liability. It's no secret, and we had some conversations, I personally had conversations with Mr. Robertson, and have talked about it multiple times with my staff, we did not, in our first contract, include potential future unfunded liability for the employees that we use to serve Victorville. The county employees that we use to serve Victorville, we did not include in the contract your obligation to those unfunded liabilities that might accrue. Quite frankly, it's because nobody had accrued unfunded liabilities when we first entered into a contract with you, and so, it wasn't on anybody's radar. However, we did state very clearly, when we talked about contract extension, that we would include language to that effect in a future agreement. And that isn't just for you. That is for any other contract that we've had. When we extended Crest Forest's contract, we worked with county council and the district council there to come up with language that was acceptable to both parties, that said, "In the event that the employees, the county employees that we use accrue any unfunded liability for retirement, that will be passed on at the termination of that agreement, will be passed on to the city." What is that? What could it be? We don't know. But really, the language simply was that it will be included. And so, and I know I stated that clearly to Mr. Robertson, we don't have any intention, nor do we have a mechanism to go back after the unfunded liability that was accrued by county employees and serving Victorville for this last contract. Any contract extension or future contract, if that's the direction that you'd like to go, that would be included. I have members of my staff here who know the city of Victorville, Chief Trapp as a deputy chief of operations, worked here, and as your fire chief here in the city. You have Chief McKee, and then our deputy chief of administration as well. So, if you have any questions, any further questions specifically related to finances or administration or organization, I'd be glad to answer those. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you. Well, good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to share a little bit about CAL FIRE. I think Mr. Gary's done an excellent job in representing CAL FIRE and the contract process that's involved for us. As he accurately stated, I'm not able to provide an informal quote to you. I also had provided some information to Mayor Garcia in that regard as well. We do require the request for proposal in order to put together a full response that includes the costs that it would take to provide service for the city of Victorville. I will mention a couple of things. You know, we've talked about who the fire department is, who has control, that kind of thing. I will tell you that when we enter into a local government contract like this, we become the city's fire department. We serve the citizens of that city. We work closely with the city staff, the city manager, and the rest of the city staff, and seek to follow the direction and the guidelines that what the city council is looking for in the city. The city still gets to set the level of service that they provide and how much they are willing to spend for fire protection service. That's all captured in the contract that is ultimately signed. I will mention there was reference to the salary increase for CAL FIRE. That is accurate. We are in the process of reviewing where exactly how much that costs. There's no way for me to provide that, because the increase varies across different classifications. And without knowing what classification would be involved, it's really impossible to make a timeline. I will tell you that it increases this year and then for the next following three years through 2020. So, there would be an annual increase in terms of personnel every year that way. Built into our contracts is an annual 5% increase, and that increase is there as really as a placeholder. We only bill for actual costs. So, if there is no increase in the cost, there is no increase to the city. We are only allowed by law to bill for what it actually costs the department to provide the service to the city. So, the 5% is not an automatic increase there. The other thing that I would mention just is that, you know, we do work well with the other cooperators in the area. It's our goal to work well with all the cooperators that we surround the city and across the state. But we also have the depth of CAL FIRE across the state, and the many assets that the department has to bring, the many skill sets that the department has to bring, everywhere from EMS to hazmat to confined space rescue, technical rescue, air assets, air programs. We have all that. If it's not something that we do locally, we have the ability to tap into our resources across the state and pull those programs and expertise into those programs into the local area. Again, I can't provide a lot more information to the city without that formal request for proposal. If that's the direction that the city decides to go, we would be glad to intrude into that process.
Could I ask a couple of questions? One of them is somewhere in the consultant's report, and I looked through the executive summary, and I cannot put my finger on it, but I know I read it somewhere, was his comment that there was a very real possibility that CAL FIRE or LAFCO would turn down our application. Why do you suppose he might think that?
I could bring him to...
I won't ask you to speculate on why he might think that. What do you think about that, Tom?
He described the process, and that is true. It is within the scope of LAFCO to turn down the request for the contract. It also hinges on some approvals at the state level, both within the department and outside the department. The department of finance has to give approval for the contract agreement to move forward. So, there are a couple of decisions that have to be made that are outside the department's control to...
Any idea why we might have problems in that area? Or would you know enough to even have come down on that?
Quite frankly, the process that now requires going through LAFCO has not been tested across the state or in this county, and so, it's really unknown.
And the other thing was, San Bernardino County firemen are in the San Bernardino County retirement plan. What plan are your firefighters in?
CAL FIRE. And that is all included in the contract. So, there's been some discussion about unfunded liability, and that is not, that's borne by the state. So, all of the retirement liabilities, workman's compensation, training, all that is carried by CAL FIRE.
You're talking about that 5% increase being a placeholder. I was wondering, is that an annual? Is that just like a deposit? And for how long would that be? And at what amount? 5% of what? What's your 100% that you're moving at?
It's 5% of the base contract amount, and it increases each year. So, for instance, where it came into play currently is the current contracts that CAL FIRE has with that 5% placeholder in the contract. When there was negotiation between a labor group and the state, and there was an increase, that 5% helps to cover, make sure that the contracting entity is plugged into the input potential increases like that.
You'd have known what the contract would be because you haven't received us a little, right?
I'm sorry, say that again.
You wouldn't know? There was also little, or are we...
No, there wasn't. Glenn and I, actually, after the February meeting, had a really good follow-up sit-down meeting. And one of the things that was refreshing about the CAL FIRE contracting option is that it's really the city who defines exactly what level of fire service we want. So, it wasn't as simple, going back to Mr. Cox's question from earlier, it's not as simple as asking CAL FIRE to come in and make the assessment. In our conversation, you mentioned that he wants the city to tell them what we want, that they can then be compared apples to apples to other options. So, a couple of other details that I wanted just let the council know. I am not pro CAL FIRE, anti CAL FIRE. It was actually a very, very good conversation, and I would be perfectly happy if the council is interested in contracting with CAL FIRE, working with Mr. Barley, or whoever, to get that done. Just to be clear about a couple of data points. One, the 12 to 18 months timeframe is actually from those appendices. That is CAL FIRE's estimation and it's not our consultant's estimation, as far as the full timeframe to get not just the local bid, but then also the director of CAL FIRE bid approval, and the state department of finance approval, and the LAFCO approval. And then, Glenn, if you can comment on the numbers that we were able to research from contract negotiations back in December, it was reported in Sacramento B that the base wages were going to go up 13, sorry, 13.8% this year, and then from January of 2017 through July of 2020, it listed classifications 22.3% for firefighter 2, paramedic, 17.5% for firefighter 2, 20.75% for apparatus engineer, 18.5% for captain medic, 18% for fire captain, 12.75% for pilot, and then 8.5% for battalion chief. Does that, do you know if that's what was ultimately approved, or was that just a negotiation?
I don't have those numbers in front of me, but that sounds fairly accurate. I believe that's into the four-year period.
Right, right, right. So, roughly 18, mostly across the board, about 18 to 20 to 22% over a four-year period.
And those costs are not in the model for...
Not in our budget either for the next four years.
I got to go back to the point, though, that I think's the most relevant, that is, if the voters don't give us a way to raise those funds, none of these options are available to. We just can't make those choices. The other part of this is, and we need to be tuned into this, if we annex into FP5, we, as a council, are going to make a decision to tax our citizens. That's a fact. That's a simple fact. It's indirect, and it looks like it's not us, but it's us when we make that decision. So, the question, really for the voters, and this truthfully is the question, either you want local control, what, and all the different possibilities that might be, CAL FIRE, our own department, a contract for the county. Want us to control that? Give us the funds to do it. If you don't want us to control it, or you don't want us to give the funds, you got no choice. We're going to annex to the county, and you're going to pay the county that way. Voters need to understand that choice. It has to be clearly explained. And given their choice, then we can pursue options. But I don't think until we know that decision that we're in a position to, they can choose options.
That's a good question. How many of you over here at Victorville residents are going to be voting? If you can raise your hands. We have one, two, three people, four, five people. So, five people. To determine for our entire city what we're going to do today.
No, they're not going to get there with any sex thing.
I don't want Mr. Farley to stand here. I don't know if you've had a few...
Don't misinterpret what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, we need to get a lot more...
We need to have a ballot issue in November.
...to know what we're talking right now, unless we're going to outreach and continue to have our workshops and outreach to the community to come to listen to what concerns are being voiced.
But if 4,000 people vote and vote in favor or against, that'll be the decision. Yeah, I'd like to have 120,000 votes, but we're not going to get that.
I don't want Mr. Farley to have to be stuck at the podium. Mr. Cox, you've had some questions. Have those been answered?
Two comments. On the county annexation, we pass the resolutions, and it goes to the LAFCO. They conduct the hearings. As I understand it, a ballot is mailed to every property owner, not registered voters. And they have to opt out or vote no. If they do nothing, it's not a yes vote, which is how we got our street lighting district council members, so that the people really didn't vote on that. But it's on the tax bill. And if this is approved, that'll be on the tax bill, $153 for every house in the city. It's tax.
Every parcel.
Every parcel.
It's actually, at least, it's actually worse than that also, in that there isn't a ballot mailed. The public is notified of the decision of LAFCO, and they have the opportunity to then gather signatures themselves in a protest.
But it's a protest.
Right. It is a protest. If they don't even have a ballot, correct me if I'm wrong, I see you out there, Kathy. They don't have a ballot mailed to them. They would have to organize and obtain signatures.
And most people don't do that. And so, generally, if I were betting, I would bet that they would not vote or opt out, and we would end up in the county contract, great firefighters, well-qualified. Everybody will get the tax bill, and then they'll call the city, and we'll say, "We ended it. Yeah, you got 150 tax, but we didn't do it. We just gave it to another agency to do it." Boy, it wasn't that easy. I believe the citizens of the city and the taxpayers have the right to determine what level they want, and I think that can be done with a ballot issue. Now, what happens? What happens if they say, "No, we're going to vote against it"? We're not going to provide the money, either through a sales tax or some form of assessment. Then, we give it to LAFCO, and then they go through the process, and it ends up on the tax bill. We've got some tough decisions. And...
That choice will only be how they want to be taxed, not if they're going to be taxed. But they're going to be taxed.
Oh, they're going to be, one way or the other.
Sales tax, parcel tax.
Yeah, but...
Or FP5.
But see, like, to me, they get to make that decision. They're going to pay the bill.
But at the end of the day, it's the people that are going to be paying it, the property owners, so...
But the only way they get to make the decision is if this council member allows them to make the decision.
That's correct.
The only way.
Does the council have any further questions?
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Thank you. We're sorry. We had you standing there all these times. Thank you so much.
You know, I would like to at least see a proposal on what CAL FIRE can provide. Cal is a great fire service. They have given us the numbers. We have a contract. We know what they can do. CAL FIRE is a great service. They have a great reputation. We don't know what they can do.
We can instruct the city manager to start that process. And if they're willing to give us a proposal without having any issues, we're going to be able to pay for it.
And then they can respond that they don't have the time, or it's easy to do, or whatever. But we don't know until we ask. They haven't started the process, because they can't start the process till we make that request. And I think we, in order to get the information that we need, we need that information from CAL FIRE. So, I think the number one priority for the council, the city manager, is a letter requesting that they submit a proposal.
Okay. Yep.
I see.
Question. As far as a special election, how soon could that happen?
So, the next available date would be November of 2017, special election for tax, sales tax, parcel tax, whatever. It would be a 2/3 majority vote. I believe after that would be either February or March or June of 2018. I don't know the special election dates off the top of my head, but...
Will you move on to the budget?
Well, we have some cards, I think.
I still have one.
There's another one here. Is that a...
This one is first, though. Call off... Hakim. Sorry about that.
No problem. Thank you for allowing me to speak here. It's supposed to be downhill at the University of the Virs, in Virsday summer school, but class started at 4 o'clock, so I could be a few minutes late. But I felt that being here was really important. I'm a homeowner. I pay taxes. And, you know, I just want you guys to know, not everybody's doing very good out there, you know? There's families that are struggling. My household, one-income household, I'm a student, trying to go to school, trying to hold the family down. Kids wanting to school, got a new kindergarten starting off. So, it's, I mean, a tax is something that's... So, it's, I mean, a tax is something to think about. I read the gentleman's proposal, and I was really confused. I can't ask him, but did he talk to Cal Fire? I mean, he said it was, on page 36, it was an unofficial estimate. What we should have done was, we should have had, Cal Fire had a bid, and so we could compare county fire apples and Cal Fire's apples together at this meeting, so we could see. But instead, like, February Valentine's Day or something, we knew about it and we didn't do that on Valentine's Day? If we had that request sooner, we could have been in a better position now. I really think that those are the apples, and apples that we should be able to compare with each other. So, I read this report, and I came up with some questions of my own. Because I basically, I just looked at Cal Fire's website, and I gave a copy to Carol Day. I have a copyright here. I don't know how much time I have. I'm not going to read all the questions, but one of the questions that's significant is, what are the assets? Will Cal Fire benefit? He, the gentleman, said there are some time frames, there's some timelines. I don't know where he got that information from. Does Cal Fire take that long? Does it, I mean, is the city of Ukhayo comparable to our size? These things I don't know. So, I can't compare apples to grapes. But if we had a report, like Mr. Cox said, that maybe we could look and compare apples to apples with it. But what concerns me is, from Valentine's Day to Memorial Day, I don't know what we did. I can't say that we were active or on the thing. I was emailing Mr. Roberts, asking, hey, is everything okay? What's going on? I don't want my taxes to go up. I really just can't afford it. So, I just want us to really think about that, take some time. And I don't know if a, if a new law, or excuse me, going to the people would be even more expensive. I don't know, but I would, I would say, get two apples and look at them and see who has what. See if, who has the trucks, who has the services, who has the bulldozer, the airplanes, who has everything. I don't have that against County Fire, or Cal Fire for that matter. Sure, both of them are good outfits, and professional, and I respect them all. But I, to be honest with you, I would love to go buy me a brand-new Dodge Cummins 2500 diesel truck. Can't wait. Thank you.
Thank you. I have to go to class.
Thank you. Thank you very much. The next card is Jim Brigoli.
My name is Jim Brigoli. I'm the president of Sacramento County Firefighters, Local 935. I represent firefighters that serve your community to date. Kind of when we started this journey was about 10 years ago, and when we took in your group, part of the thing was, besides paramedic service, was some labor issues that you'd have had since, that you had with your prior existing group. And that was some of the reason that it was dissolved from the City of Victorville. Since the county's taken over, the labor group has worked with management to make sure that we can keep the cost down for the City of Victorville. And we worked as a combined effort to make sure that we serve the community the best way possible. There's been an empty fire station that we've had for a while. We've worked with the city to try to make sure, to try to find a direction that we can finally get there to get that a little bit, to serve the community better. As you all have right there, I submitted all the letter to you from Local 2881. That's the firefighters of Cal Fire on supporting workplace jurisdiction. We have a jurisdiction issue that we deal with, with the IFF and CPF. That is for the professional firefighters and their right to stay, their right to have a jurisdiction protection area. And the reason that we keep that in place is because of what Mr. Gary mentioned to you at the end. Laying off 60 firefighters means that we're putting those people on the street. I would urge you, I would urge you to look at our options. Our group has been a well-served group for your community. I know that you have mentioned that. It's not been an issue. I've spoken to Mr. Robertson. He has mentioned to me many times that our group has done a great job for you. But I would also think you honor the workplace jurisdiction because the firefighters from Local 2881 would have not written that letter against their management if they were combined on the same theory that they should be bidding here in the City of Victorville. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for the record. Whatever issues, labor issues existed, none of us were involved.
I agree.
We weren't here. We had nothing to do with it.
Okay. Okay. You don't have any other cards?
Budget, folks. Now, do we require a formal vote, Mr. Attorney, on the direction to the city manager? Or is it understood?
It was a consensus, I believe.
Okay.
We out, by the way.
Very well done. We'll slide to our item number two. Two budget workshop. Establishing the annual budget for fiscal year 2017, 2018. And I turn it over to our city manager.
Give it a minute to let folks clear out, so we can hear.
Okay, before you start, one of the things, we have a brand-new business. I noted that the underground, in between, they didn't. And I asked what happened on Palmdale Road. Did anybody take a look at that? If they didn't, I'll bring a picture, maybe get the Daily Press to publish it. I'd like an answer, staff. Secondly, last year, we had a letter from Edison that said, we have $358,000 in the underground fund. Do we have a letter from Edison this year on how much the city underground fund?
I've not seen a letter this year.
And can we get the letter from Edison? And then, if somehow we have missed, requiring that new business in the middle of two new businesses to put underground, can we use the rule 28 allocation to do that? And I will formalize all of this in writing and submit it to the city manager, copy to all the council, including the picture of the underground and the not underground of the underground. Second request.
Any other requests?
My request is, can, I don't know if you have in mind presentations. I don't think we need any more presentations. I'd like to just deal with questions.
No, in fact, there's really no presentations.
Forty-five minutes?
Yeah. No, no, no. There is probably one minute of presentation, if that's.
Okay.
Just to set, essentially, set the stage for where we are on budget right now, based on your direction. From the last budget workshop, you can scroll to the next slide. Actually, scroll back one. So, at this point, just wanted to give you an idea for where we are with the projected fund balance at the end of this year. That looks like it goes down, but keep in mind that 3.23 million assumes every penny spent by every department, which doesn't typically happen. So, we don't have a forecast exactly where we'll be, but wanted to give you an idea. Go ahead and go to the next slide. So, based on the last budget workshop, we went back and made the changes as we discussed. And at this point, have a projected 470, essentially $475,000 surplus.
General.
In the general fund. Yeah, the other funds are all, are all fine, as discussed. So, we have a couple of options for you to consider with that surplus as we move forward. And, oh, no, Donna, you're going to present those. Can we present?
Before we start spending, can we talk about the budget?
Yeah, you don't. Yep. Any questions?
I'm on page two. And I appreciate staff adding fiscal year description really helps, so I know what year we're looking at. That column, fiscal year 1617 revised budget, third column over on page two, from the left. Is that our best estimate of how this year is going to end? Or is it the budget after we did our mid-year revision back in January or whatever else?
This is the budget based upon any revisions that have occurred throughout the fiscal year.
Is it safe to say, would you say that this is your, our best estimate of what things will look like at the end of June?
No, no, no. This is simply what's budgeted.
So, we don't know, we don't even have a good projection on June actuals?
Not at this point, no. No, we don't.
I'm going to, I'm going to make one other comment for staff, and for the city manager. I think I raised this point, I don't think I harped on it hard enough. I don't think I, it certainly didn't get any traction. But here's, here's how I would put it. Some years ago, before I was ever on the council, Jim Cox, the city manager, he called me on a couple of different occasions and said, I got something I'd like you to look at, because that's a little outside my skill level, and you're, you're an accountant. Come in and take a look at it and tell me what you think. If he had asked me to do that, with this budget, with this prepared, I would say there is a massive conspiracy in this budget to mask, disguise, and to hide vitally important information from the public. This is going to be a public document. And it's massive. And it's the use of the term other revenues and other charges. And it runs all through this document. And it's millions, and if you, if you count up the expense side, then it's probably hundreds of millions. And it's embarrassing. And I won't put this budget, I won't agree to put this budget out in front of the public. And you can start with the general fund, to go down through. We've got 139,000 in fines and forfeiture, 63,000 in, I mean, the fiscal year 1617. And we got other revenues of $8.7 million. If you go to, this came up yesterday, and I won't get into the details. You go to public works, you see the same thing. The department summary, other charges, eight and a half million dollars. If you go to economic development, or the best example is in the airport. In the airport, we've got $27 million of other revenue, and $24 million of other charges. I've been doing financial statements for almost 50 years. I use the word "other" as a place to dump things. Little stuff, unusual stuff, that nobody cares about, no one's going to ask about, that goes into "other." We've got page after page in here with these monstrous numbers that are "other this and other that." I'll tell you what it is, because I think I understand. It's rolling up from a bunch of detail at a much lower level. Rolling it up, and frankly, I think it's laziness. I think it's just, it's more trouble than anyone wanted to go to, to identify the major categories of revenue and expense. I consider this thing to be absolutely unacceptable to put out in front of the public. I'm sorry. And I think I know what most of those other revenues and expenses are. I've asked about them in the past. I think I've made the suggestion that we ought to find better ways to define big, important numbers, rather than "other." Now, that's my complaint. That's my pitch, and I'll shut up now. That's what I think.
If council would like, we could simply postpone this at this point in time and get you additional details on those other revenues.
Well, I'd like the details, too.
There is a certain amount of roll-up, but those details are available.
I know they are. That's why I don't even believe for a second there's a massive conspiracy. You know that, and so do I. We know what those numbers are. We just didn't want to take the time. And you've got plenty of room on the page to break out three or four major revenue items in detail. Give them a name. How can you possibly think $163,000 of fines and permits is important enough to have its own line, but $27 million isn't? I mean, that's just, that, that, the public is going to look at this. It's one thing for me to know what it means, and I think I do. I had a discussion yesterday with an attorney about other revenues at the airport, other charges. Well, it's debt service. And I actually knew that. I could tell it. But somebody's going to look at that and say, what's that? Airport got $27 million in revenue a night. It's not going to make any sense to anybody. Our hope is, of course, nobody opens up their website and looks at it. And as long as nobody ever looks at it, we're probably going to escape and be safe. Anybody with a reasonable set of skills can look at this and say, wow, what a rate hiding. Do you follow what I'm getting at?
I do. You've asked it before, but apparently it takes a concerted vote of the council to get that cleared.
It never seemed to get anybody's interest or attention.
I'm, I'm ready to take whatever actually we need to, to get these things.
I don't think it'll take two or three days to pull that together and put the detail in.
We have the information. It will make the books larger, and you'll have to detail it.
Doug, I don't see why. I don't see why. Most of those other revenues don't probably consist of two or three big things, and the rest of it's a bunch of little stuff nobody cares about. But the big stuff, I mean, I don't think you'll have to add a page, if you ask me. You may have to have three or four or five more lines on any given page, maybe on all the pages. And it's only an issue in probably eight or 10 different pages. Where it's really small, who cares? I'm wasting time on that. But where it's big, huge.
One of the reasons I can't answer that question is that this document is put together for the first time using our financial system. And I don't know the steps that it takes to have it printed here in the past, but it were done essentially by hand using spreadsheet. So, every one of these had human input on every.
And I don't remember feeling so strongly about this in the past.
I was surprised by your comment.
But I, but I think, I think I have raised it, but I think I've raised it in our previous workshops. We need to know that not everybody on the council has the same level of familiarity that I do, not, certainly not everybody in the public. And they ought to be able to read this and see the big, important numbers. That shouldn't be hard to do. Anyway, that's, I'll do another budget, well.
I don't know what, what more we've accomplished with another workshop, but very clearly, when the budget comes back to you on June 20th, we will do everything we can to provide additional details rather than more vague terms like that.
Not after a massive amount of details. That's, that's going in the opposite direction. We don't need that. But big, important items of revenue and expense, we ought to be able to see them and understand. That's all. I got no complaints for the numbers, though. All right? I guess I understand enough, but I'm, if it didn't look like this, I'd be willing to prove it personally.
Did I under?
Not asking for a clue at this point.
Did I, did I understand there's going to be a water rate increase July 1?
Yes, yes.
How much?
Six point two five.
Six point two five. Can I get a piece of paper that says current money in the bank, or wherever you do the funding, for water, the expenses, the income in total?
Yes, you have.
You know, what we have is a fund balance reconciliation, which is not the same as a cash balance.
I know that. You know, add 200 or 300 million in depreciation, that's zero. I want to know cash.
On water?
Water. Because I'm told there's a lot of money there, and we're spending it big time, and raising the rates, when in fact, some employees don't believe in looking at the numbers. It's justified, and I just want to see the numbers myself. Two.
Well, Jim, what, the rate increases really driven by capital projects?
Well, I think so. Yeah, we have millions ready for capital this year. Most of them last year didn't get done, but a lot of them did get done. But before, and then one other item, and then I'll probably never raise it again. Strike that. Won't raise it to this level.
Anybody want to take a vote on water?
We passed, when we passed the street lighting district, we talked about the need for streetlights. And we talked about the need to fill in streetlights. We also talked about the 34 or 36 streetlights that had been out for six months. And when we adopted this, I indicated to the council that our income would be far greater than projected, which it is, and that we would find new uses to spend it, which we have. And that I was questioning whether or not it met 218, because the income would offset the cost of the streetlights. But now, this year's budget is two signals. Now, streetlights are for people. Signals are for automobiles. People don't have headlights, so they need streetlights. But I didn't see all the additions for the streetlights that are projected. But now we've added two people in engineering from traffic for signals charged to streetlights. Why? If staff wrote that document that allows that, they're, they need to be applauded for being able to do it. We criticize the state and the federal government, and Jerry Brown Speed Train for doing this stuff, and we're doing the same thing. I want council. I want council's approval, or the attorney to read that document and tell me that what we're doing is okay, because I don't think it is. I just don't think it is.
Well, you have my approval.
I just don't understand how we can do that. This is streetlighting for the general public. We have vast areas that don't have streetlights. We have vast areas where streetlights are out. We're taking the money and putting it in building signals and then having two engineers charge to that? What? I, I, and, you know, if the report says perfectly legal council approved it, they knew what they were doing, great. I just don't believe it.
Mr. Mayor, pro gen members of the council, one thing that we did do as part of this budget, given the comments from you and the rest of the council in the past about this particular fund, we have been first focusing on, of course, the fact that there has been cash amassing in that fund. This fiscal budget, one of the things that we focus on specifically is making sure we're spending that down in this budget, in fact, does do that. The last number that I had before this budget presentation as to where we projected cash to be in this particular fund was probably to the order of $500,000 to $600,000. That's after spending a significant amount of money in this budget for capital, and that includes signals, but it also does include streetlights. We do have a number of streetlights programmed in, and those are two capital funds that are clearly identified eligible in the, in the assessment.
But it would be appropriate to get an opinion on that signal.
Yeah.
When we approved that and decided we needed to create that fund, to get a citywide fund as opposed to three or four, there was a, there was a deficit that was growing, that was causing everybody great concern, and we came up with a number. Would it be appropriate at some point to revisit that number? Because it's not our job, we're setting the people and citizens' faith.
I think 218 requires it.
One thing that happened that I believe contributed to that collection of cash to where we were concerned we weren't spending it fast enough was when we did raise the, when we did add the rate of $13.98 EBU, EBU. One thing is, we have not changed that rate since the measure was first in place. We just didn't have a real CIP to catch up and actually spend that capital down. So, that's one of the things that we're doing significantly in this proposed budget, is that we are now starting to program streetlights. We are now programming the expenditure of funds on capital to add signals. So, we are spending it down. One thing we haven't done because of the concerns about the increase in cash in this fund is we haven't raised the rate. So, one of the things that we are doing now, particularly with this fund, is we are cash flowing forward, we're looking at where streetlights are needed, we are looking at where signals are needed, and making sure that what we're collecting, we actually have the amount of funds to not only pay for the O and M for the personnel, but also the capital. To the extent we find to where there's a need for more, we'll bring that back. And certainly to the, to the point where we believe that perhaps we've installed all the streetlights we need and all the signals we need, and this $13.98 per EBU is too much, we would certainly come back. And there's a reconciliation.
We, that just totally confused me, because we don't plan the signals, the streetlights. Edison does. We don't have to study whether they don't. They do. They have a service they provide for that. We send them a letter, and they go into the area and do it. When the light's out, they replace it. We don't, our employees don't go out, we don't do that, we can't touch their pole. It's their capital.
We do.
And if our income exceeds the amount, we don't spend it down, we have to reduce the rate by the 218 law, unless we decide to spend it on other things. And since we're not involved, the two people from engineering that we've decided to spend streetlighting funds for have to be directly associated with signals and signals only. Can't be on streetlights.
We have, in fact, identified streetlights that we do install. The ones that come to mind quickly, certainly are streetlights out at SCLA.
Well, okay, SCLA, I asked the city the question, and you was told they was, that was a separate system and it wasn't a part of the system.
The system, so we do have VMS electric system out at the airport.
Yeah.
There was an Edison-controlled streetlighting system out there that they did, in fact, abandon, which contributed to the darkness and the thefts and the complaints that we had out there. So, one thing we did do in this current fiscal year is we actually energized the streetlights and installed streetlights to the VMS system. So, in those particular cases, those would be city streetlights, not Edison streetlights.
Oh, they would be on base?
Yes.
Although we said during the hearing that they wouldn't be included at the base. Well, I'll go back and find it in a minute. I asked the question. It's separate, it's different, it's a separate system.
I.
Because I was going to object, if the citizens of the city started putting the streetlights out there.
And it very well, it very well could have been back when the measure was first approved, but that is something that has changed since to where Edison actually abandoned the streetlighting electrical system, and VMS took it over.
I wish I'd have known that. Did this council vote on that?
We did share that with the council earlier this fiscal year.
Is that something we needed to move on?
Well, I don't, we have an assessment on properties. When it's an assessment on people's properties, we need to know when that change has been in any way.
I, I think legal opinion on this is going to be important. Frankly, if it is a good source for covering signals and it's legal and appropriate, I'm for it. Because if we need to have, find the funds to put in signal lights, that's fine.
Yes, we're going to.
But if it's illegal.
If we add, if we decide it's a good source and we can do it, we can double this, Steve.
Jim, if we need streets, if we need signals.
Ah, remember, these are streetlights for our neighborhoods. Be careful how we spend this in other areas where there's no benefit. That's a part of 218, you must show there's a direct benefit before you.
Well, we need a legal opinion, though.
Yes, we do, pretty emphatic.
Yeah, I support the legal opinion idea. I think it's a good idea. I would just say that I do recall from when that went to voters that it did include streetlight, or, excuse me, signals as well as streetlights.
Can you bring this up?
Well, it'd be in the documents, so it either is or isn't. But even if, even if you decide to put in streetlights, you got to show that there's a benefit.
You mean signals.
For the signals, sure. You can't just arbitrarily say, "Signals, so we're going to take all this money we approved and put signal something else."
I know we put a signal in, it didn't have a benefit.
Well, it's a benefit, huh?
Probably, the people who use it.
Can't be an implied benefit of 218, has to be a direct benefit.
There'll be an engineer's report that spells out basically, which can't count it.
Can't be a, can't be applied, has to be direct. And that's it. I, I, I quit.
Nope. That's the direction of council, we'll bring it back.
Do you have a problem with anything?
Doug, I thought we were going to come to the point, and I just stepped out to use restroom, but I hope I didn't miss any conversation about a surplus and.
We started to discuss that and went a different direction.
Well, why don't we go back?
That's a pleasure, council, I'd be happy to go through.
Why don't we go back?
So, we are at about a $475,000 surplus. $475,000. I'm going to jump out and make an assumption that your likely number one priority would be additional deputies. The cost of two additional deputies with a marked unit that we received from the Sheriff's Department is about $437,000. There are other options that I need to tell you about. Of course, we talked about fire apparatus need earlier. There are other potential uses for that money that we partially pulled out of the budget in order to free up that surplus, and those involve some facility, and repairs, roof at the Hook Community Center, HVAC, exercise room floor at Hook Community Center, replacing a boiler here at City Hall. I don't want to belabor it, because my guess is that the majority of the council, if not a unanimity of the council, will be interested in adding two police Sheriff's Department deputies, so.
You might even use some streetlight funds to cover it.
No, we cannot. We don't need a legal opinion for that. So, the only thing I would ask of the council is, is that a fair assumption that you would like to add those two deputies? And then, assuming it is, that would leave approximately $40,000. One option that we have for the fire department is to take what is somewhat surplus fire engine that is at SCLA, it's the bright yellow one that has unfortunately gone into pretty regular duty because our trucks are getting old. For in the neighborhood of $20,000, we could actually have that repainted and outfitted with the proper radio system and make it a frontline fire truck. It doesn't replace the need for a fire truck in the very near future, or two trucks and a platter truck, but it would at least provide better relief than we have right now. If the council is additionally amenable to that, we'll include those figures in the final budget, detail those things that you've asked for, for the June 20th actual adoption of the budget.
So, I'm just curious, but we had two police officers that had just about $437,000, maybe that's with $40,000. Our discussion that we just had with Fire Protection Services, was that a concern when you're spending a lot of money and distributional wonders that can come about that?
So, that is another option that wasn't discussed. You could leave that $475,000 for a decision at a later time, should you decide to use those in one-time costs, either for fire engine or should we go back to city fire to hire a chief, that sort of thing. The estimate was about 1.3 million, so this would, could offset that cost if that was the council's desire.
If that were the case, would that offset it? Because this is the money that the voters bring in, or, you know, the community thinks about, right? So, that tax money, so could we help the taxpayers by using some of this money, you know, amassing more taxation if we already have certain fund?
You could, you could, yeah. That could theoretically offset, but the numbers that, the tax numbers that appear either as the FD5 or a potential parcel tax of the city or special benefit assessment that the city may adopt are above $5 million. So, this wouldn't, certainly would, would hurt, but it wouldn't help enough that I think the voters would, would really help us in.
Personally, I believe in every voter I have ever talked to has stressed one issue above all others: add more plus.
All except, number one.
That is, that is number one priority in this one.
Not at all surprised by that, but I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't discuss the other options.
And by the way, did that fire, fire truck that we got on that surplus, did we ever get that in service? The ex-firefighter got for us free?
The, not, it wasn't surplus, it was.
No, it was a new.
Yes, yeah, it's bringing, yes, it's in service at Station 311.
311? Is that the base?
I believe so. 311 is our headquarters.
Okay. Well, initially, I asked what was going, and I was told it was going to the base.
No, it was never going to the base. I don't know if they told you that. They don't need a fire engine there, they need our trucks, the big monster trucks. So, in fact, they have a fire engine there that they don't need.
So, the new truck is at 311, which is at the fairgrounds?
311. And what we would do, what we propose to do in the next, in the budget is to take that fire engine, the regular engine that's at the base right now, and repurpose it for the city and paint it appropriately and get it equipped appropriately.
Okay. I still have public comments. We don't have that much time, but let me see. At this time, we will have public comments. Do you have a question?
Okay. Just time button, you have a.
Amy Stanton?
My name is Amy Stanton, I represent the Friends of the Victorville Library, and looking at the budget proposal for next year, we support the transfer of the one full-time staff position to the library. They work very hard in the library and they could use the extra full-time staff, and we've had that position for the past year. And we also want to encourage the short-term and long-term solutions to creating additional library space on the west side of the freeway, just to support our resident.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else? No one? This is concluded.